Will you please open up the board for the purpose of taking attendance? Members, you may check in at your desk.
The board is now open for roll call. Chair Bell has requested an excuse. Commissioner Kneecik has also requested an excuse.
I am here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes from the November 1st, 2022 meeting.
It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2022 meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye.
On your tablets.
On your tablets, please. Okay. And Anne votes, Commissioner Basham votes yes on approval of the minutes.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk.
Chair's remarks.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to wish the Chair a speedy and quick recovery and so she can get back in this spot as soon as possible. Hopefully by Thursday. We'll see, we miss her. Also, this Thursday, in recognition of Heart Health Month, which begins tomorrow and Friday, as everybody knows, is Wear Red to Work Day. Because we're all going to gather on Thursday, I encourage everybody to wear a little, if not a lot, of red when we come to work this Thursday. Lastly, before we move on to the agenda, I want to recognize a longtime employee of the Legislative Auditor General's office. If he would join me now, Mr. Michael Sosnowski. As you're walking up here, Mike, I'd like to say a little bit about you. First of all, I know how much Marcy Cora and the whole Auditor General team has appreciated your work over the past 16 years. I'm reading two passages, the first and the last. "It is with great pleasure that we, the members of the Wayne County Commission, pause and honor Michael Sosnowski, following his 16 years of outstanding service to Wayne County, working in the Wayne County Office of the Legislative Auditor General, and five whereases later, to the resolved that the Wayne County Commission congratulates Michael Sosnowski on this latest chapter of his life and wishes him many more years of spirited health, happiness, and personal fulfillment." Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, this is quite an honor. It's a significant day in my life, one of many I've had. This is the most recent one. I've been here 16 years, two days as of today. So it's been a, it's been an enjoyable time for me. I appreciate Marcy's support and the rest of the staff in the office, as well as the Commissioners. Without you guys, I could not have performed the way I did, good or bad. This is a great honor, I really appreciate it. My son last morning said, "What hobby are you going to start doing now as you retire?" I told him, "Sleeping in." So that's number one, then I'll go from there. I've got, get a chance to spend more time with my wife, daughters, my grandkids, get to see more of them. Whether they will enjoy it or not, I'm not sure, but I told him, be careful what they ask for. They've been after me for a couple of years to retire. So I finally took their advice. Like I said, this is, it's kind of a bittersweet moment. It's exciting, it's scary. This will be the first time since I was 10 years old I've not had a job. So, but life goes on, things change. I'll adapt, move on. And again, I can't thank the Commissioners enough. And Marcy, appreciate your help, your support, your mentoring. And again, it's been the greatest honor of my life to work, actually for myself, because I'm a citizen of Wayne County, and we serve the citizens of Wayne County. So I basically have been self-employed for the last 16 years. But no, I really appreciate this so very much. I plan to keep in touch. Not sure how often, but I plan to do, keep in touch, keep a finger on the pulse of the county. And again, thank you so very much. It's an honor that I really don't deserve, but I appreciate it anyway. Thank you.
Good to go.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know we've got technology, but I've had my button on to speak about this person leaving the county. As Chair of Audit, I don't know that I would support him leaving the county. Because we need him, he's done a phenomenal job, working with not just the Auditor General, who I know he salutes every day, but also the committee. And on a serious note, he will be missed. So thank you, thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Commissioner Haddus.
Better, it's not a hat.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
We are on unfinished business, there is none listed. We're moving to page two of the agenda. Item number one, under New Business, requesting Commission approval of Retroactive Amendment Number Three to a five-year contract with two one-year options to renew between the Charter County of Wayne and the Michigan Association of County Services Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take up items E1 and 2. You can describe and go over them both if you would, please, Erin. Thank you.
Yes, through the Chair, Erin Wagner, Deputy Chief Financial Officer and Acting Procurement Director for MMB. The first item is an extension of the existing agreement between MAC Service Corps and the county. We are in the process of putting these services back out to bid. Monica Jackson is the procurement lead for that solicitation. This extension honors the pricing that was established in 2015. So there's been no increase in rates or in the technology for this. MAC has been providing supplemental procurement consultants in addition to the software for the procure-to-pay TCM licensing. The TCM licensing will be sunsetted once the ERP system is up live. And that should occur not this, not in the end of 2023, but in the end of 2024. So we'll need those, that license to continue for the next two years. I think I lost them, oh, there we go. So, you know, this contract or this extension, we do anticipate to bring before the body, before the end of the fiscal year, from the result of the solicitation that's going to go back out to bid. But for licensing purposes, you know, we worked with MAC to extend for an additional year. The reason for the retroactivity was it got caught up in TCM through the workflow and it wasn't a week or two before we identified that, where it was and got it back on track.
To that point, Commissioner Basham.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask about, and if, and also, it's just another million dollars. Even though you say the rates haven't gone up, it's another million dollars, you know, to extend the contract. This is, my thing is process, if you know this is coming and, you know, why can't we get in front of it? Why do we have to have more and more retroactive contracts? Or sole source as the next one's going to be?
So that, in this instance, you know, unfortunately, it was a perfect storm. You know, the procurement director at the time had left the county, I was coming in, and, you know, the, had to work with MAC to get the extension set up, so that took a little bit of time and a little bit of negotiation our part to get them to agree to hold of the pricing.
You know, I'd not be doing my job if I didn't question sole source and retroactive, so I'm just trying to not give you too many more gray hairs, but I'll, you know, when they come in front of me, I'll ask the question.
Most of them are falling out, so hopefully it's.
Any other discussion on item one before we move on to item two? Go right ahead.
All right. Item two is a CJC-specific contract with MAC. It's to have dedicated staff help with the project managers, Nellie's team, for the solicitations directly related to that project. This was brought up because we were finding that existing county staff and MAC agents were getting torn between regular county duties and the priorities of the CJC. This contract is different in that it's structured as a time and materials only, and it'll be dedicated staff. So the individuals that will be working on this will not be doing other county activities. So it's actually going to be, you know, completely different staff. This contract is also pulled out of a separate budget, too. So it goes directly against the CJC transition costs versus general fund, which is where the regular MAC contract is housed. This contract also, too, is good until the end of September, which is when we will be fully transitioned into this contract. So due to the immediate need of it, you know, the structure again is time and material, so we pay for what we use. And then it will sunset once we're moved into the building.
Members do have some questions. First, Commissioner Colleen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start with a public service announcement. Anybody missing their cell phone, they left it up at my, up at my desk here, so if you're missing it. This contract calls for staff augmentation. What does that mean?
So staff augmentation in this instance would be, you know, they would be helping or augmenting the procurement staff, just because we don't have the bench strength at this point to fully dedicate to regular day-to-day business and take on this particular project because of the timeframe and the volume of the contracts that are coming through.
Oh, so we don't have the personnel on hand to handle this?
Correct.
Are these county jobs we're going to hire people into?
So, again, this is, it's project-specific, so we're not replacing any county jobs. We just, we have an immediate need that's far greater than what was normally anticipated.
I got you, but are they going to be hired as county jobs? Are they going to be hired through, who are we paying for these additional staff people?
Oh, MAC, MAC, Michigan Association of County.
Okay, so it'll be their, it'll be their people.
It'll be their people through the project. And then, once the project is done, you know, that need or that requirement will go.
And then they're done at the end of it?
Yep.
Any augment in staff? And also, I'd like to ask Commission Counsel, there was a, Commission Counsel expressed some concerns about two contracts with the same folks dealing with some of the same issues, some, as far as I can tell. And then there was some back and forth with Corporation Counsel. So I'd like to ask Commission Counsel at this point, what concerns Commission Counsel has about the contract before us here, item two?
Through the Chair to this honorable body, as indicated in the analysis, we were pointing out that the approval of the second contract would mean you have two contracts with the same vendor doing procurement, staff augmentation for the procurement division. Now, the current existing contract, which is item number one, under that contract, it doesn't preclude services related to the CJC. So now you have one contract which could include the CJC and other things, and then you have a second contract that is number two, which is dedicated specifically to the CJC. So the potential for overlap is always a concern, and this is why the Commission would not, under normal circumstances, approve a second contract with that same vendor for that same service. In addition to that, one of the reasons we express concern is that, sorry, several months back, when the administration had indicated that they were going to have a significant amount of contracts and procurement-related work for the CJC, this staff asked the value of those contracts, because we were trying to ascertain how much in value would those 200-plus contracts be? And we were told at that time that they couldn't give us a number, because the, some of these services and contracts are embedded in the regular operations of the departments, so they really couldn't separate them out. So now it just wasn't clear how you can have a separate sort of contract for procurement for those contracts and services and say it's in a separate budget, so it appears they found a way to maybe separate them out. Whereas when we asked months ago when this first came up, they couldn't. So we were just trying to get some clarification with regards to that, and just bring it to your attention, the possibility of duplication based on how the contracts are written. Can't speak to how they're going to be administered, just can speak to how they're written technically under both, you could have CJC services.
Through the Chair, all contracts that are related to the CJC, we have set up and identified a workflow that's specifically for that. So we are able to track and identify those contracts separated from regular county business. So, and then we've also set up a way to, once the CJC is transferred over, have those contracts reassigned back into county business, posts, you know, moving into the building, taking possession of it, and then getting back to a day-to-day operation. It was just, we identified that there was a need during the transition time to make sure that we identified those. And it was more from a staff dedication piece, in addition to making sure that those contracts that we had worked with Commission staff to identify had a proper pipeline. So we were able to track those properly.
Oh, there's not going to be any concern from your end, the Commission Counsel is, suggests about having two contracts with the same company?
No, and the reason we didn't present this as an amendment is because the second contract was set up as a time and materials, and that time and materials will be for dedicated staff that won't be working on other county business. So we've got ways to track and make sure that, you know, there's no overlap.
And then I guess I'd like to go back to Commission Counsel one more time. We've had the explanation from administration, we've heard your concerns. At this point, Counsel, do you still have concerns about going about it this way?
Through the Chair, I think it's going to come down to the administration of the contracts. Again, we don't control that. The department has indicated that they believe they have a system to avoid the duplication of services and the duplication of payment. If that's possible, then we shouldn't have an issue. Again, I was just speaking to how the contracts were written and what could happen potentially. If we administer them correctly, then that possibility could be avoided.
So your answer to me is, we have administration's word for it, that the two have been separated? Are we going to track to make sure that that is what actually happens?
I don't think that this staff will have the capability or the access to do that. So that's something that perhaps you can ask the department to report back to this body at some point, but that's not something the staff can do.
I think it would be helpful, given the nature of this and a little bit of the unusual, and we're driving to the finish line and all that kind of stuff. Could you report back to us to like, okay, this is how it works out, and this is how these two contracts are separated?
Yes, yes, certainly, we can, we can report back on to, you know, hours worked, who the, who the employees through MAC were, as well as what contracts they were working on. We can certainly do that.
I look forward to that, you know, this is all a matter of dotting i's and crossing t's. And I get nervous when my Counsel goes, "Hey, wait a minute, we have some issues here." So as long as it's open and out in the public and we have the proper reporting, that gives me a lot more comfort for this than having something out there where people are like, "I'm not so sure about this." And maybe we'll never know, kind of deal.
Through the Chair, should this be reported through the CJC committee meetings or through GovOps? I can do both, and we can duplicate it.
I think GovOps is a logical place, maybe even both committees.
For sure GovOps, that is where this would normally go through if it weren't coming straight to Committee of the Whole. So I think that would be appropriate. And then the full board would get it after the report goes to Government Operations.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Wagner, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Basham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Colleen answered some of my questions, but, you know, it is, Counsel did mention that it's not common to have simultaneous contracts with the same company. It could result in them getting paid for the same project. So a number of flags went up for a number of us Commissioners relative to that. And again, comparable source is always an issue with me, so I'm not real happy with it. Thank you, I've said enough, not looking for response.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the time and materials, what exactly does that look like as far as time and material?
So in this instance, it would be MAC would log the hours that each individual worked for the specific projects. The main MAC contract that is through MMB and has the Jager licensing on it is a fixed-price contract. So, you know, monthly, it's equal amounts throughout the term of the year. Whereas this, you know, if they work 10 hours, we pay for 10 hours. If they work 100 hours, we'll pay for 100 hours. So it's a much tighter control on tracking the throughput on it, and also back to the reporting, it allows us to have a direct line as to who's worked on what project. And so we can, we've got greater visibility on the CJC piece.
Okay, is there a time parameter that this should take? I mean, what's the time on it?
Yeah, so that we'll get monthly invoices and we'll have those times logged with the employees once a month.
Right, but do we have an estimate of how much time this particular project will take with their, what they're doing?
Yeah, so based on the hourly rates and the FTEs we dedicated, you know, and the amount of time that we need, that's where the calculation of $400,000, $441,000 came in.
But if it's less than the time, then they.
We don't, yeah, we only pay for what we use. So if we end up theoretically using $300,000 worth of time and materials, that's all we're going to pay for.
And then, as far as, or in regard to the ERP project you mentioned, how will this impact or complement or take away from, from, from the ERP project?
So once, once the second phase of the ERP project, or it's Connect, we call it Connect 43, because it includes ERP, HCM, and EPM, it's like three different pieces. The ERP section of it, once that that is implemented, that will replace the TCM contracting workflow entirely. So that, that P-to-P Jager relationship will be sunset, and it'll all be done within the Oracle platform.
So we'll just smoothly transition into ERP?
Yeah, and it, you know, the hope and desire on that is greater visibility, you know, obviously greater connectivity as well. But it, you know, it'll be a much more robust platform and, you know, we'll work with Commission staff once we start designing that to make sure that all parties understand and are happy with how we build these workflows.
And do we have an update on where we are with the ERP? I know this may not be here.
Yeah, I believe that there is an update scheduled, I have to go back and check, but, you know, I know that they were looking to do regular cadence updates on it. So I don't have the dates in front of me, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Is there any further discussion on items one and two? Hearing none, Commissioner Haddus moves, supported by Commissioner Morecki, that items one and two be approved. Clerk, open the board. Members, you may vote at your desk.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item.
We're on item number three, discussion on the second round of American Rescue Plan Act projects.
Thank you. Hassan, please join us.
Morning Commissioners, how are you? The purpose of today's presentation, the purpose of today's presentation is to do an overview of what's to come forth in Batch Two of the ARPA projects. As we go through the presentation, I do want to highlight that the projects have been organized in a manner by project manager. So you'll see the clumps going through in that aspect. It's a, as we go through, if we can do the first slide, please.
Hassan, could you please identify yourself and title for the record?
I apologize. Interim Director of Economic Development, Hassan Sheikh.
Very good.
Next slide, please. So first off, we wanted to start off by doing an overview and a recap of our process. In front of you, you have our buckets. Public Spaces, Workforce Development, Health, Economic Recovery, and Infrastructure. You'll notice that Housing and Education is highlighted in a different color. The purpose of this is, in Batch One and Batch Two, this bucket was Housing. Moving forward, it will be converted into the Education bucket. So anything that's, from the allocation that's left over in the Housing bucket will be now, moving forward, used for the Education bucket. Next slide, please. This is a pyramid that the Commissioners have seen before. This is what walks through the methodology in which projects are selected. So first and foremost, we look at, does this, does this meet Treasury requirements? What's the relation to COVID-19? Is it outcome-driven? Feasibility. You see, sustainability is added in now in a different color, and I wanted to highlight that. Part of what we're doing is, I've inherited, you know, I'm coming in, this is an A-through-Z process, I'm coming in at X out of A-through-Z. What we're looking at from Batch Two is also ways that we can improve the process, ways that we can make it more efficient, ways that we can make it more impactful. And you'll see certain areas in the presentation, as well as other areas as we have further conversations, that we'll be making it more, more efficient and more inept, right? So sustainability has been added, because feasibility is great, but we also want to make sure the project is sustainable. Leverage, funding-wise, and equity. Those are the, when the projects come to us, our team does an internal review with these items in mind. Then we also, I want to highlight, we have internal checks and balances where we, then we have an ARPA steering committee. These projects go in front of the ARPA steering committee. Then it goes in front of administration. All of this happens prior to coming, before you all as the Commission. And we want to make sure that that happens, so that we get as many eyes on it as possible. We get as many, as much input on it as possible as well. Next slide, please. So before we go into Batch Two, an overview of where we're coming from, I think, would be, would be, would be great, right? I don't want to go into the weeds of this, as we do plan on coming back in front of you to do, to do an update presentation on Batch One, but I would like to highlight one specific item on here, which is happening today in Van Birham Township. The groundbreaking event today is going to be the first groundbreaking for the projects in Batch One, as this is going to. As this is going to be wonderful, a wonderful day. The Commissioners should have the invitation in their calendars and would love to see all of you there. But I did want to highlight that for you all. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Now we're going to get into the meat and potatoes of the presentation, batch two. We have seven community submitted projects and we'll go through those first. Next slide, please. We're going to start off in the city of Southgate, the Southgate Tower Park and Pedestrian Bridge. The project manager on here is Lucius Anthony. All of our project managers are present today for any detailed questions that we may have. We will be asking, you know, for all questions to be saved until the end of the presentation so we can get through. And then we can answer all questions accordingly. This specific project is looking to bring a new and unique park space to the city. It's going to be open to the public. It's going to include tennis and pickleball courts, a walking path, putting greens, as well as an outdoor fitness circuit. It's going to complement a larger project to rehab the Southgate Tower. The total cost of this project is $54 million, $800,000. The community's contribution is 3.8 million. Contributions from other sources is 46 million. Our contribution to this project is $5 million and this project sits into the Public Spaces bucket. Next slide, please. Next, we're going to be moving to the city of Wyandotte. The Wyandotte Capital Improvement and Infrastructure Project. Again, the project manager on this is Lucius Anthony. This project is a major placemaking and public infrastructure project. It's going to deliver approximately $13 million worth of capital improvements. They're looking to drastically improve safety and access of their built environment, as well as enhance bicycle lanes, pedestrian and non-motorized walkways and connections between neighborhoods, as well as waterfront and all assets and amenities in between. The total cost of this project is $13 million, 302,928. The community's contribution to this project is $8 million, 302,928. Contributions from other partners will be $1 million and $50,000. Our contribution as a county to this from ARPA funds is $3 million, $3,950,000. And this is in the Economic Recovery bucket. Next slide, please. This moves us to the city of River Rouge, the Centennial Community Plaza Project. Project manager on here is Lucius Anthony. This project is centrally located in the city's downtown. The point and the purpose of this project is looking to catalyze further economic development as well as attraction to the urban downtown area by creating a space for everyone to gather, relax, and play. The total cost of this project is $325,000. The community is contributing $50,000 and our contribution to this is $275,000. And this does fall into the Public Spaces bucket. Next slide, please. Next up, we have the city of Melvindale with the Melvindale Kessi Fieldhouse Capital Improvements Project. Now this project revolves around a staple and a cornerstone of the community, for this community. As this fieldhouse serves as a service center in times of emergencies as well as a place to gather and for event coordination. The proposed project is to rehab the existing facility through capital improvements, which will include the roof, parking lot improvements, indoor terrars, interior hall, concession stands, offices, as well as the adjacent boat launch. The total cost of this project is $4 million, 344,721. The community's contribution is $344,721. And contributions from other partners will be $2 million. Our contribution matches that, the contribution from other partners as in $2 million. And this falls into the Public Spaces bucket. Next up, we have the Huron Township, the Huron Charter Township Downtown Development Project. The project manager on this is David Schreiber. This project is looking to redevelop downtown New Boston. The downtown streets will be resurfaced, bike lanes are looking to be added, connecting to the Metro Park as well as other areas. New lighting is looking to be added, landscaping is looking to be installed, and utilities are looking to be buried underground as well as a small park to be developed for gathering, relaxation, and events purposes. This park will overlook the Huron River as it is constructed. The total cost of the project is $5 million, 375,000. The community's contribution is $5 million, 100,000. And our contribution to this project is $275,000. And this does fall into the Economic Recovery bucket. Next up, we have Redford Township, the Redford Recreation and Wellness Center. The program manager on this is David Schreiber. This project is seeking to build a recreation and wellness center near the existing civic campus in downtown. It's looking to add, this project will include a recreational area, classroom spaces for educational purposes, swimming pools, a field house, as well as the required infrastructure to support the project, which will include a retention basin and parking. The total cost of this project is $19 million, 533,433. The community's contribution is $11 million, 76,433. Contributions from other partners being brought in is $2 million. And our contribution to this project is $6.5 million. This will fall into the Public Spaces bucket. Next up, Canton Township. Again, the project manager on this is David Schreiber. The Cherry Hill Village Project. This project has six components to it, as described by Canton Township themselves. It's a new town in a town. First up, you know, first component is the Canton Town Square, which is an eight acre, eight acre central park area. The Village Arts Factory renovation. Three, the public parking, re-up. Number four is the reuse of Cherry Hill School. Number five is the reservation park development. And number six is a public trail system. And this plan looks to create a programmable downtown to develop a sense of community in an otherwise stalled area of town. So hopefully this can catalyze economic development, attraction, and retention. The total cost of this project is $9 million, 500,000. The community's contribution is $4 million, 750,000. Our contribution is matching the community's contribution at $4 million, 750,000. This project falls within the Economic Recovery bucket. The next six submitted projects are internal projects submitted by departments within Wayne County. The first project we're going to look at is the North Branch Ekorst Creek Drain Maintenance, brought forth by the North Branch Ekorst Creek Drainage District. I do want to highlight that the first two projects that we'll go over within these, you know, projects are going to be brought forth in front of a vote because they are operated by a separate board and a commission. The others are being brought to your attention as there will be reallocations, but making sure that you all are in the know and can provide some feedback to us. This drainage district specifically for this project is going to retain professional service for drain maintenance, including tree clearing, open channel clearout, obstruction removal, drain crossing, cleanout, and bank erosion stabilization. We're looking to invest $10 million as this falls into the infrastructure bucket. This will affect the following districts, District Four, District Eight, District Eleven, District Twelve, District Thirteen, District Fourteen, as well as District Fifteen. Next up, we have from the Wayne County Land Bank, the Blighted Property Demolition Program. We're looking to invest $7.5 million into this project as we are looking to demo blighted properties. Specifically in Highland Park, we're looking to demo 200 houses there alone. This is going to be a project that's going to be overtaken by the Wayne County Land Bank. And then the properties that will be demoed, the properties will then be, the ownership will be then transferred to Wayne County. And this does fall into the housing bucket. Next up, we have the redevelopment of the Wayne County Parks. We're looking to redevelop Menken Mills Campus Master Plan, which is by reactivating the Miller House, replace paving, walkways, and parking, as well as add signage and site amenities, including outdoor programming space, which will allow for individuals to do different gathering and event spaces as well. Vinoy Dorsey Park, install new parking areas, universally accessible amenities, and a wellness zone among other improvements. Holiday Nature Preserve Restoration, we're looking to restore 12 miles of trails and bridges, which should increase tourism as well as provide a place for Wayne County residents to go and enjoy nature as well as the other sites that Wayne County has to offer. This is going to be a $10 million investment out of our Public Spaces bucket. Next up, we have Freedom Village in the city of Inkster. This project is going to be, with support of Wayne Metro Community Action Agency, we're going to be building two new, two-story multifamily rental buildings with a total of 23 units. Housing in the buildings will be open to refugee populations resettling in Wayne County. With, we're looking for an investment of $3 million and this will come out of the housing bucket. Next up, we do have from the Economic Development Division within the Economic Development Department, we have the Small Business Program. We're looking to invest $20 million into this program, which will be utilizing partner organizations to get us into the communities to make sure that the businesses in all different demographics geographically are being, are being served. And by providing technical assistance needed to recover from the economic downturn. This program is looking to allocate a maximum of $10,000 to approximately 300 businesses per year. And again, it's a $20 million investment coming out of the Economic Recovery bucket. Next, we have the Health Department Special Programs Team. As we're looking to really build something great out of the Health Department, we're looking to invest $1.3 million into a team that will work directly with the HHVS Director to design and implement new ARPA-funded health programs within the department. They're going to work alongside county departmental leaders to develop transformational programs that improve health outcomes as well as quality of life for all Wayne County residents. Again, it's a $1.3 million investment coming out of the Health bucket. The next slide gives us an overview. We have 13 total projects, $74.6 million of investment from our ARPA funds, which will then support a total of $158 million of total investment within Wayne County. Our last slide here gives a breakdown of the spending by the batch and gives us an idea of our numbers, right? So we started off with $339,789,370. In batch one, we spent a total of $99,45,160. In batch two, we're proposing a spend of $74,601,325. With both batches combined, that would bring us to $173,646,485, which would then allow us with the remainder for future batches, $166,142,885. Again, I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to present this to you all. This again was an overview of the presentation of the projects that will be brought forth to you. We will be coming back forth to you at the end of this month, February 28th, as well as March 2nd to those dates. With that being said, I would like to open it up to the Commission for any questions that you and or concerns that you all may have so we can address them appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Hassan, any questions for Mr. Sheikh? Commissioner Morecki.
Is it I now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This is very concise, very, I appreciate all the time you put in this. And you've been obviously very busy since you came here. So when the ARPA fund requirements came out originally, I was kind of stunned that sustainability was not part of what came down from the federal government. So I'm really glad to see Wayne County has added this in now to assure that these funds aren't going to go to waste down the road. So I have a couple of questions then from that.
Yes.
This Freedom Village.
Yep.
How will this be sustained when this is built and refugees are coming in?
So we're working, so the Community Development Division will be working with Wayne Metro. It's an organization that has history of doing this. And this is, a project like this has been undertaken by the county previously from a community, from federal funding in the past in the city of Highland Park. So we have experience doing this in the past. The city of Inkster is very excited to have this being brought forth and have dedicated and committed to long-term sustainability of this project as well. So not, it's not just going to be something we invest in and we walk away from, but it is something that will be a sustainable project.
That will be sustained by other factions than Wayne County?
So Wayne Metro is going to be a long-term, they're going to be taking it over after we invest as well as the city of Inkster will be there as well as a partner.
Okay. And then my next question is this Economic Development Department with the with the technical assistance, and I think we touched on this before, but who is actually going to be helping out all these companies in this $20 million spend with this technical help?
That's a great question. So right now, we've allocated the amount that we're going to be investing into the business or into the program, right? We've already have a vision in terms of how the program is going to look in terms of intake, working with our partner organizations that have been designated for the program, which hit numerous different areas geographically as well as from different, you know, cultural backgrounds and is very inclusive and diverse, right? So they'll be on the ground as the gatekeepers to the program, making sure that they're getting the word out to the respective businesses. Now, when that comes in, what will, what we'll be able to provide is funding to these organizations on the grounds as they come in to assess the businesses in terms of what their needs are. And based on what their needs are, then we can provide the technical assistance, whether it be, do they need help learning how to balance a budget, putting together a business plan? Do they need help with their media? Do they, what is their need? And then from there, we can provide, you know, some better guidance and advisement in terms of where they need to allocate those funds that they're going to be getting provided to them, which is a maximum, again, of $10,000 for 300 businesses per year throughout the duration of the program.
Okay. So you're actually going to have different groups that are going to help out with this technical assistance. And are you vetting these groups and keeping track of how they're using the monies?
Yes.
That are going to be given to them?
Yes. So one thing that our, our team is, you know, moving forward, which we are truly dedicated to, is making sure that every dollar that is being allocated and being spent and being dispersed is being tracked. And even for example, when it comes to batch one, not a single dollar is being dispersed until we get, we're providing the communities with an invoicing guideline, right? And they're going to fill out that invoicing guideline and provide that to us in terms of line by line item of how it's being spent. The funding from here is going to be a grant program, but they need to provide us line by line on where and how they're going to be utilizing those funds so we can make sure that those funds are being appropriately used. And furthermore, from our end, we can make sure that we are providing the guidance to these businesses saying, hey, you might want to think about utilizing these funds instead of, hey, look, your business plan looks fine, but your social media and or your media plan doesn't look like it's that hot. So we need to make sure we're, you know, you might want to invest into that. So we'll be on, we'll be working hand in hand with organizations on the ground as well as from a high level to make sure that all businesses that come through and are awarded the grants are not only utilizing the funds appropriately, but are using them, utilizing them in the most efficient manner to get the most bang for their buck for the business.
Okay. And then just one last question is the Health Department one.
Yes.
Okay. How is that going to work too? Is that with, are you reaching out to different groups to help out with this? How does this work? I know it's 1.3 million, which is a lot less than 20 million, but.
So part of what we're looking at, like I said, I came in at X in the process from an A through Z process. And I'm learning a lot and I've learned a lot that can, that will help us improve and make batch three's process much more efficient and better, which we will be implementing. And we've been able to tweak up a lot of, of the process here compared to batch one. And I commend my team for doing that. When it comes to the forward thinking is before we can invest ARPA dollars. Uh, when it comes to the forward thinking is before we can invest ARPA dollars into projects, we need to bring a team in that can analyze and provide us, um, guidance in terms of where we need to start investing those dollars. So this team specifically, uh, we're investing 1.3 million dollars to bring in on a team to have these conversations and then provide a plan, a structure for the future batches where we can say, okay, this, these are, this is where we want to make sure we're allocating and dedicating funds towards because this will make, give us the most bang for our buck as a county. Um, and have the most amount of impact on, uh, Wayne County residents. So that is the thought process behind this. Um, once the, the dollars are come, uh, come, come into the department, I will leave that up to, uh, the director of that department in terms of the process in which they, uh, choose to bring on their team. Um, unfortunately, we, we don't have a representative here, but any questions you have about that specific process, I can take on and make sure I get that back to the commission.
Okay. Thank you. Well, good job. And one last question, when, when does batch three come?
Batch three comes as soon as, um, you know, we, we get through this entire process for batch two. Since we've come in, our team has been dedicated and focused on making sure that we get this through the finish line. Um, and again, I commend my team for really stepping up and getting this to where we want to get it to, um, as we are, are hitting our internal, uh, you know, timelines. And, uh, again, thanking you all as a commission for, uh, you know, get, helping us get there as well. Um, as soon as we get through this, then we can start putting a focus towards batch three. Um, and we want to make sure that we're, we're shifting to batch three much quicker this time around. We're also looking, um, at, uh, you know, exploring ways to engage, uh, with communities. Uh, you know, we acknowledge that we want to make sure that all geographical areas are, you know, are, are, have equal opportunity to, to propose projects and as well as an equal opportunity to be awarded projects. So one thing we're looking at as, um, uh, exploring ways to engage different communities and educating them how to, on how to, uh, um, put in proposals, um, wherein, what they need to do, what we're looking for, to make sure that all, uh, you know, districts covered by commission have that equal opportunity and, um, and the education pieces there as well. So.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And to follow up on that point with a change in power in Congress recently, I know some members of the Michigan delegation are encouraging sooner rather than later for, uh, batch three. So we can get that moving. A number of members have requested to speak. We'll go down the column from the left at the top. Vice Chair Protem, Commissioner Baydun.
Holy Commissioner.
Okay, now, thank you Hassan again for this presentation.
My pleasure, Mr. President.
Very informative. Um, I have a question on that, uh, Melvindale facility, the, the field house. Oh, caught my attention, indoor turfs. My soccer brain started working right away. Is there indoor soccer facility in this building, you know?
Oh, uh, I'm, I want to introduce, um, our project manager for this specific project, Lucius Anthony. Um, he will answer all questions, uh, when it comes to their specific projects.
Good morning. Lucius Anthony, project manager, economic development. Uh, yes, to answer your question, it is an indoor facility.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah. I, I seem to remember that, but I wasn't sure. Okay. That's good to see. Uh, another question to Hassan on the, um, the blighted property demolition program. You mentioned that this is going to be about 200 residential homes?
In the city of Highland Park alone. So, you know, we're looking to, 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 um, demo, or the land bank is looking to demo, um, as many blighted properties as possible with, with, uh, that 7.5 million dollars.
So these properties currently are owned by Wayne County Land Bank?
No. So they're going to demo these homes and then the properties are going, the, the ownership will be transferred over to Wayne County once the houses are demoed.
Who owns these properties right now? I mean, they're, uh, the, the, were they foreclosed on?
All right. Uh, good, good morning, everybody. Anthony Carr, right, executive director, Wayne County Land Bank. All right. So the brighter property demolitions, uh, program is some of the properties that are in the Wayne County Land Bank inventory currently. Highland Park has about 150 properties that they currently own. They're going to transfer over to the Wayne County Land Bank, uh, for demolition.
Okay. Uh, once these homes are demolished, then they become the ownership of, uh, Wayne County Land Bank and I'm sure that down the road they're going to offer them for sale for redevelopment, I'm sure, right? Not just going to sit on them, right?
Yeah. They'll, they'll be transferred prior to the demolition. They'll be transferred. They'll, at the time of demolition, they'll be owned by the Wayne County Land Bank.
Okay. I guess that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you again, Hassan.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got a few questions here. I didn't see a list of the communities that have already submitted projects that are still waiting that might be part of, uh, the third batch. Uh, in this handout that you gave us, would you pro, provide us that where they're at? Uh, if there's, what's, what is waiting, what is holding those back? Uh, if it's something from the communities, uh, still work to be done, uh, on those and give us some idea of what it is that's, what, holding them up.
Just to clarify, you're looking for a list of projects that were submitted for batch two that did not get, that did not get awarded?
Yes.
Um, okay.
And if, if you could, which ones you expect to be in batch three? Uh, which ones are still waiting that are, might be part of batch three?
So for, for us, like I said, um, uh, you know, with, with Commissioner Morecki, uh, batch three will be taking a deeper dive into, um, after we get batch two through the process. Um, and, uh, but we can definitely provide you with a list of, of all the projects that were submitted for batch two, um, and which ones were not awarded.
When we, when we received the first list of batch one, we, uh, we had a proposed list that had not been formally, solidified, I guess would be the word, uh, in that handout we had before. Looking for something similar to what we had before that tells us, uh, where we're at on those, you know, what's the status of them.
Uh, our team can follow up with you and make sure we're, we're getting the, the commission what, what you're looking for.
Um, and these, you mentioned at the outset of the meeting today, uh, the steering, the process going through the steering committee and then through the administrative committee. Uh, can you provide us a list or who, who are on those, the steering committee, uh, and the administrative committee?
We, we'll, we'll work on making sure we provide that, uh, to the commission.
Uh, also, um, I see you do, did have a commission or a total of the county's contribution in the, uh, on the handout towards the back. The, um, the Wayne County Department submitted projects that's listed in this handout. Are they part of what the county was originally indicated they were going to take out of the ARPA dollars? Are they included with that amount or is this in addition to it?
Um, I can do some, uh, I, I can do some research for you and, and try to find out. Again, I'm coming in at, uh, X in the process of A through Z. So, you know, I have a lot, a good grasp on, um, uh, from X through Z and I'm getting a, a much better grasp on, on prior two. So there's certain areas that if, uh, you know, if you forgive me, um, that, uh, I, I might have to go back and do some research on for you. Um, so if you clarify, uh, the ask for me specifically, you're looking for?
Originally, originally we were, uh, told that the county was taking a, a, I, I can't remember how many millions of dollars, uh, out. And I'm wondering if these that are on this handout are part of those or are these in addition to those? Uh, also, uh, one of the things that I would like to see, and I think others would, uh, the missing, uh, we're not seeing in this handout the ARPA projects that were already allocated for the previous, uh, communities. And what, and what the totals are, because it appears as though there's some here that are uh, in communities that were already approved, uh, for other projects. So in order to get an idea of the fairness of where it's going in the total county, uh, I think we need to see where are those projects that we approved before, how they match up and with the communities with these new proposed in this, uh, project, uh, this group, batch two. Uh, so I'd like to see that information.
Would like a list of all the districts as well as a list of all the projects in each district.
Right.
Okay.
By just, by district and by community. That's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker McCormick.
Mr. Chair, is it, yeah, still on? Um, so some of the commissioners already asked, uh, some of the questions. Um, but when you indicated that there were seven communities submitted, um, it kind of threw me off in this handout, um, because that wasn't the total submitted, it was just the ones in which you chose to move forward with.
Yes. So just to clarify, uh, Commissioner, um, so in order to provide clarity in this presentation, because we had certain projects that were internal and certain projects that were community submitted, that's what, uh, that verbiage was allotting to, not, not that these were the only ones that were submitted, um, that these were the submitted projects compared to the ones that were internal projects.
Okay. And is there going to be another batch after the third batch? Or do you anticipate the next, next batch because it's, um, what, uh, 166 million left? So.
So again, um, with, with batch three right now, you know, we were already starting to get proposals in and we haven't even been able to start taking a look at it. Right now, deep divingly, we're trying to get to batch two, making sure we're getting this across the finish line. And then we can start having those specific conversations in terms of strategies. Um, but you know, whether, we, we are looking to, um, in, in the future, uh, make that decision. Okay. Are we going to get rid of everything in batch three? Are we going to have multiple batches? We haven't come to any conclusion in that yet. All we do know is we're trying to make sure that the funding that's left over, the 166 million approximately, that we get it out into the community and into the hands, um, to make impact as quickly as possible.
So the original, uh, list that we received, it was like 200 different projects. Are you saying you're adding different projects, uh, other than the ones we originally received? Or, um, is it a, a moving list? That's what I'm asking.
So I'm not aware of the original list that you guys received. I haven't seen it, um, just to be very candid. Uh, but I would like to have, you know, I'll, I'll go back and do some research in terms of what that list is that you're referring to. Was it the list of, uh, what I'm assuming it is, and I can verify once I go back with my team, is that the list of projects that had submitted for batch one that didn't get awarded? What we do in each batch, some, some, like from, you know, some projects that come forth, they may not be fully filled out. They may still have too big of a funding gap. So we say, you know what, there's still some work that your project needs to do and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it in the next batch. Some projects just aren't qualified for it because they're just, they don't, they don't hit the threshold for that pyramid that we talked about. Um, does it hit all treasury requirements? Is it COVID-19 related, et cetera, in terms of making sure that it is in line with methodology? So there, there's two ways, right? So out of that 200, um, potentially some may have been, you know, added to the next, you know, uh, you know, list to make sure that, okay, when you come back, where's, where are we at now? Um, but we're, in each batch, we're continuously making sure and asking and encouraging groups to continue to provide us with proposals because we want to make sure we're looking at that. Um, for us, we want to make sure that the funding that we're utilizing, that we're getting out into the community, that we're getting out, um, uh, for the needs that's out there is the most impactful, um, that is going to be, uh, you know, the most thought out, most efficient, sustainable. Um, and with, with all those factors being, being brought into play and the only way we can do that is making sure that we're encouraging, um, uh, you know, others to continue to, to provide us with projects as there might be more projects this year and new issues this year than there were last year, right? As long as it falls within those thresholds. And again, we are looking, um, and in exploring ways to provide, um, the education piece, um, to make sure we're going into each the, um, of the districts to provide the education piece, um, and tutorials in terms of how to submit projects, what we're looking for on the projects. So when we're getting these projects, they're more complete the first time around and that we're providing as much support and help and, uh, to the communities and, and the groups, um, as possible when they're looking to submit these projects.
Yeah. I just noticed that there were some projects that were on the old list and some of these seem to be different from the original list. And, um, you know, it was a, a couple of projects that, in my district and I would be interested in knowing how, um, the projects are being divided in districts and to make sure it's fair because it, it just seems that, um, there's some overlap in, uh, the projects being in one or two areas. Um, yeah. So I just, I would be interested in seeing that as well.
I appreciate that insight, Commissioner, and we'll make sure to follow that.
And for, um, the businesses, uh, assessments, uh, the small business program, how and where will these dollars be spent or in what areas? Is it certain, certain communities or is it open to all businesses throughout Wayne County?
This is open to all businesses in Wayne County. We have partner organizations that are satellites in, um, in, in different areas, but this is open to all Wayne County businesses.
Okay. And you indicated that the way in which you're going to, or I guess you're going to outsource, the process of who's selected and who, you know, how, how are you going, going to do that?
There's, there's certain details of the project that we're still finalizing. Um, once we get those details more finalized out, right now the allocation of the 20 mil has been there and we've gotten the, the skeletal outline. Um, the details are still being worked out. Once that happens, we do plan to come back in front of commission and, and provide that follow-up.
Yeah. Again, I would like to know how you're going to divvy up the 20 million because again, we want to make sure that all communities, uh, have the ability to apply and we're aware of when and how that's all going to roll out.
And I can provide you that follow-up. Just to initially the, you know, the breakup, we're looking at, um, allocating 500,000 for admin, um, and, and overhead and then, uh, 9.5 to will go out into the, to, to the organizations to help to increase their capacity. And then, uh, approximately 10 million is going to be, uh, put to the side to be allocated for the actual grants. Um, so that's that breakdown. Um, but in terms of the, the processes and whatnot, um, as we, as we get that forth, I'll be more than happy to, 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 to have that with you. And one thing I do want to stress on, um, as a department, um, as a, a department head, I, I value transparency and communication, um, and I will always make sure to, to try to do that. Uh, so anything, any questions you have, look to us as a resource. Um, and anything that we can, you know, provide you with, we will make sure to do so.
Last questions. Um, the Freedom Village. Uh, this was a project that I didn't originally see, I think, on that first list. Um, and it indicates that it's open to refri, refugees. Does that mean that, that it's open to anyone? Or is this a project that is only going to house refugees?
I'm going to pass this on to, uh, uh, the, the, a director of, uh, the community development division, Tuesday Redman.
Easy Redman, Director of Community Development. So Samaritas is partnering with us, um, in selecting the refugees, whether they're from another country or whether they're from the United States. When we did Freedom Village one, we also went through, we, uh, went through Samaritas. They get a lot of homeless, they, um, you know, families. And so it's, we're going to mirror it with them the same way we did the first project. And as anyone is, that's affiliated under the Samaritas will be selecting the homeowners.
Okay. So is that for refugees or is it for unsheltered people?
Unsheltered.
Unsheltered. Okay.
It's, it's identified as refugees, uh, to allow people that are coming from other countries as well.
And how does this housing work? I mean, is it, uh, I mean, is it, uh, it says twenty-three units. It, do we, do they stay there for a year or is it?
Well, they, they stay there. The first one we did in the city of Hamtramck, there were six and the families are still living there, um, and so they'll be housed there permanently unless they decide to move.
Okay, and they pay monthly?
Yes, through, through the, uh, um, it's gonna be managed through Wayne Metro.
Okay, so they, they pay monthly rents, uh, but it's affordable?
Affordable rent, affordable.
Based on their income?
Based on the income.
Thank you. And the last question was to the, um, blighted properties that we're demolishing. Um, Mr. Anthony said that there were a hundred and fifty in Highland Park that's being demolished. Uh, is there other communities that were demolishing properties and what does that look like?
So there are more than, there are over two hundred plus in Highland Park. A hundred and fifty are currently owned by Highland Park. They're transferring those properties over to us. The rest of the properties are in our land bank inventory. And properties that need to be demolished in our land bank inventory are in West and East.
Thank you.
But in a buffer for next year, as we anticipate and getting about twenty properties through, uh, tax auction, that's probably gonna be need, uh, in need of being demolished that we're gonna get.
And once these are demolished, are there any areas where we foresee, um, uh, developments or?
They, you know, when, you know, from a development aspect of it, you look at it as, as better, and you know, it's better for a developer to see, uh, developers see vacant land as opportunity. They see half burned out businesses, problems. So if we, if we tear them down, they see opportunities. So yes, we think that, definitely spearheaded development in those areas that we can tear down.
But in, in particular, um, is there a area where you're demolishing property that you already foresee someone coming in or had interest in developing that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, putting my real estate hat on, yes, I mean, we, if you go to Highland Park, we're gonna pretty much demolish entire blocks, you know. So, you know, a developer can come in and, you know, build anything from, uh, you know, commercial to. Inster, the Inster property is a, is a big corner lot, that's the huge church. So that'll be, uh, excuse me, old church. I saw it's down, I think the, it definitely is gonna spearhead development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Basham, were you trying to signal that you wanted to ask questions? Okay. Oh, not a problem. Commissioner Clemente, yes, I can, yes. Commissioner Clemente.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been very informative, thank you. Uh, being a new commissioner, I have learned a lot. I made a ton of notes and a lot of them were already answered. So I appreciate your work and your team and look forward to, uh, batch three and my projects being done in my district. So, um, but I think one thing is a question, when they're submitting their product, projects, they also have to have the match. Is that something in the proposal that you look at?
So, so when, when we're taking in, uh, proposals, one thing that we like to have usually is at least a fifty-fifty match. Um, in some situations, you'll see, um, in some communities, uh, they may be distressed communities. Um, so we do, we do take these things into account in terms of, okay, if this community tries to match us, they, they might not keep the lights on, right? So we want to make sure that we're, we're taking that in, into account and, and being a, as just as possible with the process as well. Um, but usually, and as you see, and, and the end in terms of the total amount of, uh, uh, it's a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars of, uh, you know, of development being supported. And we're right there near that fifty-fifty mark that we like to be at.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate, I have heard from one of my communities that they were sent something back. So the education piece is super important that they're receiving something back and why this might not fit into the buckets or where they need to make some adjustments. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and that's good to hear because that's something that we're stressing heavily upon in terms of making sure there's communication and follow-up with these communities. Um, so it's, they, they're not just in the blue in terms of what was wrong with the proposal, why, we want to make sure those things are being answered in terms of making sure we're building up the relationships with all these communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dobbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask, um, if you knew when the final rules for spending the funds were given to us? I think it was either like May or September of twenty-twenty-one, is that correct?
I will have to go back and look, but I believe it was around that time.
Okay, so we, we knew around then when we could spend the money or how we can spend the money. Um, do you know when we gave the first deadline for the communities to submit their projects?
For batch two?
No, initially, when, when we, we first received the money, we, we got the rules on how we could spend the money and then we put it out to the communities to submit their proposals, their projects, and we gave them a deadline. Do you know when that was?
I'll have to look back and, and find that for you, but I'll make sure I do.
Okay, and, um, from another question that I, I can't remember who asked it, but did you say that you do not have the list of the first, um, submission of, of projects from the communities?
No, we, we have the, we have the list of the full submissions.
Okay.
So I, what, what I was looking at, um, and what I understood was there's a separate list that was provided to you all other than what I've seen. Um, and that's what I want to clarify and make sure that it's the same list that I have. Um, everything is tracked and, and kept in, in, uh, into our airtable. So whether it's batch one, batch two, all proposed projects that have come forth, whether it be two hundred, four hundred, we have access to all of those as well as where they were in the process, what those projects were, and we can pull those up at any time.
Okay, I, and I apologize if this was in the presentation today, but I don't think I could find it. Um, when was the first batch approved by the commission? Do you have that date?
Not off the top of my head, um, but again, I can get back to you in terms of the first batch.
Okay.
Again, I, I do apologize as I'm coming in at, at X out of Z, uh, A through Z in batch two. Um, so a lot of these historical questions.
And I, I know that you are relatively new to this department. Um, if anyone else from the administration is here that has the answers to my questions, love to know them.
Hi, through the chair, Ramsey Ritchie Sustainability Officer. I believe the last, the first batch was approved by commission on October twentieth and then signed, um, by corporate counsel, um, early November, probably November second.
So it was October of twenty-twenty-two, October, November?
October of twenty-twenty-two, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, and then Hassan, are we, um, so we are taking more proposals from the communities? We're not just sticking with that original list, is that, that's correct?
It is a rolling process. Um, we are accepting, um, proposals, um, and even right now, we, we're, we're getting proposals for batch three. Um, we haven't been able to, you know, take a look and start the process just yet because we're focused on getting this through the finish line, this batch through the finish line. Um, but yes, um, you know, we're, we're encouraging.
Okay. All right, and every one of our communities is aware that they can submit more proposals?
Yes, and, and again, that's part of the education piece in terms of making sure we clarify that and let the communities know that, hey, you know, we are, uh, you know, in a.
Okay, because I was not aware of that. I thought it was, we were just sticking with the first original list, so that's good to know. Um, let me see, um, are we, are, is Guide House still working with us?
Guide House is still, um, on, 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 on contract. Um, and, uh, we are, in terms of what they're doing, um, we are, uh, having those conversations. Um, but yes, they are still working with us.
Okay, what, what does that mean that we're having conversations? Are they still working on this ARPA project?
Yes, so for myself coming in, uh, new, having the conversations with their team in terms of what they can take lead on, how, so we're, we're figuring all that out. But yes, Guide House is still working with us on this specific.
Okay. So, um, for batch number three, you did not have an answer as to when we can expect to see that come before the commission?
Not, not at this time, no.
Okay, and so is that relatively untouched by your department and by Guide House? Um, or could you say like, is it fifty percent done or zero percent done?
Batch three, we're only in the intake process right now. We haven't started any of the other processes. Uh, coming in, again, you know, I'm, you know, we, we've been focusing on making sure we're getting batch two ready to go and in front of you, um, and through the finish line before we start going on to the next batch. So before we can look at batch three, we need to make sure batch two is, is good to go.
Okay, um, I don't know if you've heard from the communities, but I definitely have heard from the communities and they are, um, they're pretty upset at the, you know, timing of all this and, um, they, you know, they, they want their projects to be approved. They want the money, they want to get going on this. So, um, I would, you know, urge some, uh, expediency on these projects and, um, you know, we want to, we want to get these approved and we want to get, uh, the money to the communities. So, um, I think that is all that I had. So thank you, Hassan, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, you know, I do want to say we do share your, uh, your, uh, resolve for expediency. So hopefully when we come back later this month, we can get a, uh, get, get the, get the votes that we need, so.
Definitely, thank you.
Commissioner Colleen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and this item is on our agenda for discussion today, not for action. Uh, good morning, Mr. Shay. Some months ago, and this has been bandied about so far in the discussion, we got an omnibus, I guess if it was a ballot, we would call it bed sheet, huge of all of the projects that came in from the local communities. Given the conversation day, what I'm thinking, if you could update that, take off the stuff that's no longer being considered. I know there's, uh, you know, there's extensive discussions going on with all the communities about projects and what can qualify and maybe what was put on that list five months ago is determined not to be qualified. But I think an updated list of what the hot projects are, um, uh, would be in order. Um, I don't want to get into the details of this today because it will come before us. It's up for discussion today. I'm glad to see some money going to the E Course Creek. Uh, for the sixteen years I've been on the commission, that's been a real problem down there uh, with basement flooding and all sorts of stuff. But when it comes back before the commission, uh, and I'm an east sider, so I don't know if there's a south branch of the E Course Creek that's been giving us heartaches. Uh, but I want to see if this ten million, uh, when it comes back before us, is going to, as best as we can determine, solve that problem. The homeowners down there, it's just been a mess. Um, I'm also gonna refer to the blighted property demolition plan. And I know this is, uh, Commissioner Scott's district with Highland Park, so I'll let her carry the water on that. But it was mentioned that there was a affordable housing in Hamtramck. Uh, somebody mentioned here today, was that ARPA dollars?
Oh, that was, uh, that was historical, those were federal funding, um, federal dollars that were.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And I just wanted to point out as I go through the projects here, that the, uh, seven point five million that is partially going to take homes down in Highland Park, um, is the first money spent east of Woodward Avenue from out of our ARPA dollars. Um, so, and that's why I'd like to see the updated list from the communities. I know my communities have submitted projects and I, I want to know where they are. Um, also, uh, we have an American Recovery Act because we had a little pandemic and a health crisis in this country and the ARPA was in response to that. Today on the list, we have one point three million for the Health Department. This is the first time the Health Department has been mentioned. We're halfway through our dollars. And as you described, this is going to be a team to come in to investigate this and, you know, what can we do and put together a team to do that for making, uh, proposals in the future. Because strengthening our Health Department, uh, is, is a very big issue with me. COVID has laid bare some of the, uh, some of the shortcomings in Health Departments all around the country. We have a one-time opportunity and I'm also in favor of funding sustainable projects, not one-time ones. Uh, but I'm very anxious to see that we have a really thought-through improvements, uh, to our Health Department, uh, as a result of this. And you mentioned transparency with the commission earlier, Mr. Shay. Um, I would highly suggest that as that team is developing, uh, projects for the Health Department and how we can do this, that that be done in tandem with the Health and Human Services Committee. I don't want to come to a committee of the whole four or five months ago, four or five months from now and go, oh, this is how we want to spend it in health. And there's been no discussion with the, uh, commission through its Health and Human Services Committee uh, about what the priorities are there. So I would highly recommend that, uh, we work with that group um, and that we have discussions in committee, uh, about that money and where it's to be spent and, uh, priorities for that. So I'll leave it with that. Uh, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kenlock.
Thank you, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair. Um, first of all, I'd like to say, just looking at these various proposals, um, they seem, um, and appear to, um, be quite beneficial to each of these communities, um, that they will have a lasting and a transformational, uh, impact on, on these communities. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, um, um, looking forward to actually, uh, actually voting on these. Um, one thing I want to ask was why aren't these being presented committee of whole? And, um, being, uh, how soon do you, well, my point is, how soon do you expect this, these items to actually be recommended for action by the full board?
So we will be coming back in front of you at the end of this month, February twenty-eighth, um, followed by March second meeting date. Um, and we want these to be, you know, our, our plan and our goal, you know, is to hopefully get your guys' uh, your votes to approve this and, and move forwards that we're, we're ready to go, um, uh, by March.
Okay, looking at this north branch E Course, um, Drain, um, Drain, uh, Drain District, uh, the Drainage District, um, it's, it seems and appears that within this category, um, there's, um, some contracts that will be associated with this. But I heard you, uh, or you can clarify that regarding to these projects that they won't be coming for the commission for approval, did I miss here anything?
No, so these projects will be. So the Land Bank project as well as the, the E Course Creek project will be coming, uh, in front of you all as those involve IGAs um, and are, are operated by, you know, they're overseen by a, a separate board commission, right? So this one is the North Branch E Course Creek Drainage District, um, uh, you know, for this, for this commission. And then the, the Land Bank has its own board, right? So that's why those will be coming in front of you.
Okay, um, you, you know, we know there's been a change in, in Washington as far as in the House of Representatives. And of course, there's a lot of rhetoric that's coming out, um, but rhetoric that speaks to these ARPA monies and clawing back. Um, and so, um, there's some concern that, from, from talking to the, a couple of members of the Michigan delegation as it relates to how soon these ARPA dollars, um, around the state are actually gonna make, um, make it into the community. Um, because I guess there's deadlines, hard deadlines that have been, uh, associated with these ARPA dollars. And so there's some fear that folks are going to start grabbing sooner than later, these ARPA dollars. So how soon, uh, or if you haven't, um, do you imagine wrapping your head around creating some hard dates that will bring those items and projects before this commission so we can get shovels in the ground and meet the, you know, statutory requirements?
Yeah, so for, um, when it comes to the entirety of the ARPA dollars, the remainder after batch one and batch two, um, as I said, for us, you know, our desire is to get the, the, the funding out as quickly as possible, right? But what does that mean, what does that entail? We gotta sit down, um, after batch two is done and kind of take a look at the batch three and potential batch four and, and what, whatever that may be. Um, when it comes to batch one and batch two, once the money is allocated, then you, you have until a certain amount of time to, to get it out. The, the, the fear that you're talking about in terms of the clawback is in regards to if any monies that's not allocated. So if it's not allocated, that's where that fear comes into, right? Um, and that's.
So it's not tied to shovel, you know, in the ground?
So the batch one and batch two, as long as their funding has been allocated to them. You know, and again, what we're hearing is rhetoric, nothing is concrete, um, of, of any of that sort, right? And again, what we're hearing is rhetoric, nothing is concrete of any of that sort, right? So, but at the same time, batch one, because it's been approved, it's been allocated, you know, their, their money is, has been allocated to them. Batch two, of course, is going to be pending, you know, commission approval, but once that, that goes through, same thing, that money will be allocated. Again, you know, for us, it's extremely important to get the, the monies out into the communities as, you know, to make the most amount of impact and as efficiently as possible for sustainable projects. And that's what we're going to be dedicated to.
I, I, I really appreciate the executive retooling this because there was some sort of logjam as it relates to moving these projects through. And so I know calls from commissioners and, and I know that the executive have really wanted encourage you all to get these projects going. My, my next question is, when you bring the Freedom Village here, because could you put clarity in the fact that it will deal with unsheltered as well as refugees? If that will be more, more clear in its description, you know, as you bring it for our final approval. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Irma Clark Coleman.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On batch one, I guess they call it. How long, because I'm following up on Commissioner Kenlock's. So have you notified the awardees of when they might receive those funds?
For batch one?
Yeah, the ones that were, that we approved. Have you notified the awardees when they could expect to receive those funds?
Yeah, so in terms of our process, once the commission votes and the allocation has been made, we notify the, the communities right away in terms of your allocation has gone through the process and it's been approved. The follow-up process in terms of how funding is, you know, dispersed is that we provide, we're providing an invoicing guideline and they're going to provide us invoices, right, for, so we can keep track of the line-by-line. Because again, these are federal dollars and we need to report appropriately as well. So for example, if you have a $2 million allocation, right, and you have a $2 million project, you know, phase one, and it's not, it's not work that's already been done, because a lot of these communities can't do it and get reimbursed. It's hey, provide us an invoice of the work and quotes of work that's going to be done so we can get you the funds in your hands so you can start things, getting things moving. So out of $2 million, say, we get an invoice for $500,000 for groundbreaking and whatnot. Okay, now we have an invoice that we can attach to the project. So when we, you know, if we ever were to get audited by, by, by the feds, we can make sure that we're, you know, covering our tracks and showing that all funding was appropriately tracked and dispersed.
The reason I'm asking you this is because those community groups, they, even when they've been told that they've been approved, then they want to notify the community when they can, when they will see something. And so then they have to then wait until the county gets around to giving them a hard date as to when those funds might be received. They cannot move forward to do anything until they get a firm date as to when those funds were available. They, they might have already notified them that they were going to start in the fall and then that didn't happen. So now they are notifying them that, and this ain't one of those big ones, this is a little tiny one. This is a little tiny one. And then they notify the, their residents that it's going to be in the spring. So are they, are they going to be having to put this off again? Because the county has not told them when those funds would be available?
Coming in and inheriting the department, this was an issue that was brought to my attention. Our team as a whole has stepped up and has worked very hard to make sure that we are addressing these concerns and this issue. Part of that was putting together the invoicing guideline and getting that out to the communities, which is, you know, it was done last week to get it out to the communities to say, this is the invoicing guideline and this is how we can start moving forward. Once we start getting those, those invoices in and we'll disperse the cash right away. So if we can have a side meeting, I would like to hear about the community, their concerns, and see how we can make sure to be a resource to them and walk them through to make sure that they're not missing any guidelines or deadlines, I mean, and walking them through if they need any additional help with filling out the invoicing guideline.
Well, I think we are, the department is partly responsible because we've had so much change in that department. And so they have been used to working with, you know, the, the, the directors and the, I guess they called them the, the, their managers or whoever is working directly with them. And they've all gone. So now we've got a whole, and they don't know who to go to or, or whether or not this is going to happen at a certain time. They were comfortable in working with those individuals that, that they knew. And since, it's been a whole lot of people gone from that department. And the people that they were used to working with are no longer there. So somebody needs to be able to step in there and inform them about what, which, when and how.
I, I, I hear your concerns. I hear you. And, you know, a, a number one priority for us is to make sure that, again, transparency, communication, but also the relationships with these communities is extremely important. And making sure that they know who to, they can be, you know, they can contact here at the county. First and foremost, myself as, as the interim director, they can always come to me and I can always direct them to the right person. Other than that, I'm going to have conversations to make sure, because from my understanding, our team has been reaching out to the communities that they're in charge of because nothing's been dropped. While individuals have left the division and gone on to other, you know, areas of work, all those projects have been reassigned. So I think part of that may be just to make sure that the, the projects that have been reassigned, the communities know that this is the new point of contact for them, which, you know, to my understanding, that had been done. But I'm going to go back and follow through and make sure that, that is done again. So the communities know that this is the person that I go to, that is my ins for the economic development team here at the county.
I would like to talk to you afterward.
Yes, please.
About that project as well as another.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Martha G. Scott.
I thought I'd talk louder now. Okay, thank you. But Mr. Lucius, he knew that I was calling on him. So Mr., well, I don't think it's you. I think it's the other, other Lucius Anthony. Oh, Cartwright, I'm sorry. Oh, it was Lucius Anthony that was there before. I may need to talk to both of you then. But anyway, Mr. Cartwright, I know that the Land Bank has had some homes in Highland Park that they have been demolishing. Now, have you demolished all of those? Because it was quite a list.
Yeah, it's quite a list. And actually, this project encompasses that list.
Oh, it's part of this list?
Yes. We've already, we already are currently demolishing homes through CDBG right now in Highland Park. But I think that's only like 13.
Okay, but that was different funding that those were.
That's different funding. So right now, with this proposal here, we're demolishing everything that needs demolishing in the land bank inventory.
Okay. Now, is this all the homes that need to be demolished?
In the land bank inventory, yes.
I don't know what you mean by that, in the land bank inventory. By you saying that there is probably still some more other than these that you are.
I would think there's probably more homes that the city of Highland Park, that were private owners still own that are going to be demolished.
Okay. Now tell me, how does it work? If the land bank will receive this inventory, who makes the selection of what goes to the land bank?
City of Highland Park is providing us with the list.
City of Highland Park provided you with this list, okay. And now, when, when it's completed, when you do all the demolition and it goes directly to the land bank, so the land bank is the one that then sells. Now, what does the city of Highland Park get?
Developments.
Pardon?
Developments.
They get the development, okay. Okay, so if someone comes in to develop it, what do you get out of that?
We just, we're going to sell the vacant land. Okay, so we'll, we'll sell the vacant land to the person, oh, the people or development company who's going to come in and develop it. We'll get with the city of Highland Park to make sure that's something they want in that development, of course.
Okay, can you speak more directly into it? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, so what is going to happen is, you know, we own the land. We'll sell the parcel, okay. Developer come in with a proposal. You know, what they want to put on that vacant land, we'll get with the city of Highland Park to make sure that's something that they want in that area. And if that's something they want in that area, then at that time, you know, we'll sell it to that developer and put them on some kind of a personal development agreement, you know, and then, you know, they'll, they'll develop whatever structure, house, whatever they want to do, build there and, you know, then Highland Park will get that development in the city. And I'm sure they'll pay some type of taxes to, for, to the city.
Okay, so what we get out of will be the development, the taxes when somebody come through, but you gets the funds. So what do you do with the funds that you get?
It goes to land bank. So the land bank is a self, it's a self-sufficient organization. We don't get any money from the county. So we have to think of ways that we can get the land bank money. I mean, this is not going to be a, it's not going to be a heist by any means, you know, these parcels are not going to be very expensive sales. So, you know, it's vacant land, so whatever, what we can get from the vacant land, which is normally the SEV value is what we sell it for. So we're going to try to sell it for SEV value at first, and if it doesn't, then we have to come up with some more creative ways to sell the, sell the land.
Can I have a list of all these properties that you all will be demolishing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there apartment buildings included in that?
Highland Park is still finalizing their list. I didn't see any apartment buildings on the first draft list they sent us. They got to cut it down to the properties, the amount of properties that we asked for. I didn't, like I said, I didn't see any apartment buildings, but I have not been physically out looking at every single property they have yet. Hopefully we'll get a finalized list from them within the next couple of weeks and then we'll definitely get it to you.
It's a new administration. Have you met with them?
Yeah, we had a Zoom call about two weeks ago.
All right, I can't hear you.
Yes, we had a Zoom call about two weeks ago.
Okay, all right. Was the mayor on that, on that call?
Yes, she was.
Okay, all right. Okay, and approximately how many homes are you referring to now?
In Highland Park or through the whole thing?
Pardon?
In Highland Park or the entire proposal?
The entire proposal and the ones that you have on the list that you haven't did?
Entire proposal, we, we estimate, we estimate about 235 properties.
235 properties.
Highland Park is roughly over 200 of those.
Okay. Do you have any idea when you're going to get started on this?
When you guys vote on it and tell us we can get the money? When you guys vote and tell us we can get the funds and then we'll start on the project. We'll start, you know, my anticipation of is we're voting on in, in the March meeting, probably summer, you know, summertime. We'll, we'll probably have the first, the first property torn down.
Wow, okay. Now, but the ones that are already on the list, are you still tearing those down now?
Yeah, we're, we're currently tearing down properties in, you know, in our inventory that are right now in Highland Park with some different, with different funding.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. You definitely have an authoritative voice. I love your voice.
Well, he does, but if it's not directly into the mic, you can't hear it, okay?
Right, right. Yes. Commissioner Colleen.
I wanted to ask just a couple of follow-up questions on that last discussion. It's my understanding that generally, under right of first refusal, after the auction or before the auction, we offer local communities to take properties out of the auction. I know the city of Detroit generally takes all of their properties and that we don't have any left over in the Wayne County Land Bank. How many of these properties in the 7.5 million that the Wayne County Land Bank has are in Highland Park? And then how many of these properties are ones that Highland Park took that they now want demolished? If you can't give that today, please.
I don't have the number. Well, okay, so the right of first refusal process, which really just started two years ago. We, there, there are no properties in the right of refusal process that I think any municipality would take that needs demolition. That's, you know.
Say that again.
I don't, I don't believe there are any properties that anybody would take, including Land Bank or the municipalities would take in the right of first refusal process that need demolition because we have to purchase those properties. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't purchase a property in order to demolish.
Let me ask them this way then, if that's not the case, if this wasn't properties that Highland Park took out of the, took out of the auction. I don't want to get too weedy here, okay? Can you, do you know how many of these properties are in the Wayne County Land Bank that would be demolished in Highland Park? And these are all residential, I believe, correct?
In the Wayne County Land Bank inventory, properties that are in Highland Park is 64.
64 residential properties?
Yes.
And now we're going to have another 150 or so that Highland Park is going to?
Yes, roughly 150 or so.
Roughly 150 or so. Okay, and any community under ARPA could ask for demolitions of properties that the cities own? They all qualify under ARPA?
Uh, yeah, all of them qualify under ARPA. Yeah, if they're in the land bank inventory, yes.
Okay, again, you're talking the Wayne County Land Bank inventory.
Yes, the Wayne County Land Bank inventory. So these properties.
Established that two-thirds of the homes in Highland Park that we're going to tear down are not in the Wayne County Land Bank.
They will be at the time of demolition.
They're going to have to transfer properties from Highland Park. All right, so I'll have to ask the question in a different way then. Let's say Romulus wants some that the city owns torn down. Under ARPA, they could put those properties into the Wayne County Land Bank? And then the way, we could use ARPA dollars to tear them down then? I'm sorry, that was a yes?
Yes, it was a yes.
Because I don't recall any discussion anywhere else in ARPA other than here. Are we soliciting that from other communities?
No, no, when, no, when, when we got, when we got ARPA funding, and somebody, you can back me on that. When we got ARPA funding, I believe East Community submitted proposals.
Right.
Highland Park submitted a demolition proposal.
Okay, they're the only ones that did that.
They're the only one that submitted demolition proposal.
I don't know if all the local communities knew that either. I mean, the rules under what's eligible and what's not eligible for ARPA, and especially in a lot of these smaller communities that may or may not even have an economic development person, would know that. But so, because I was curious, if it wasn't in the Wayne County Land Bank, how does it qualify ARPA? So the deal is, if a local community wants to take some of the homes that they own, maybe even ones that they did exercise right of first refusal on and take out, they can now, the county land bank would say, okay, we'll take those properties. But there's no budget for. But there's no budget for how much money out of ARPA you want to use to demolish homes?
We set a budget, yeah, we set a budget, however, for this proposal, you know, that budget is going to be eaten up. Now, you know, Mr. Shay wants to, you know, go into batch three and have the community submit demolition projects and we commit more money to it than the land bank and be totally happy to, you know, facilitate that process.
So this satisfies what you originally thought would be your budget for home demolition under ARPA?
Yes. Satisfies the projects that, you know, between the land bank inventory and the projects that came in.
That's for the first half, that's for batch one and two. Well, and I don't want to labor this today, but I would be interested down the road here, that if we made communities aware of this, that they can do this that way. And how many communities would want to take us up on that? But I think as we discuss this further and allocating this to make local communities aware that this is a possibility for them as they submit projects. Look, we already have one that's approved over here. We know what, what it takes. Because I, I would think that there'd be more communities out there that would have some interest in that. So I'll leave it there for now, but I wanted a better understanding of how all of this works. So thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling on me a second time.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to all the members for your thoughtful and thorough questions. Thank you, Mr. Shay, for you and your presentation from your team today. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number F, such other matters as may properly be submitted before the committee.
Any other matters? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Public comments.
Do we have any emails or anyone requesting to speak that's participating by Zoom?
No emails were submitted.
Thank you. Anyone online requesting to speak today?
No hands. Oh, yeah, we have one. How much time are you allowed?
Two minutes. Go right ahead, Mr. Randall.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Randall. I'm the executive director of Grandma Rosa Development Corporation. I'm here today in support of one of our projects, a mixed use development that would bring 42 additional units of housing for seniors ages 55 plus as well as 5,400 square foot, square feet of commercial space along the Grand River Corridor and Commissioner Baker McCormick's district. And so I'm coming to, to say that not only do we have the community support, but the support from the city of Detroit for this project. We have several funding commitments. But we're, we understand that this project is being considered for the third batch of funding, for ARPA funding to this, to the county. And so I'm just coming to say that that project is full steam ahead and with the support of ARPA funding, we could potentially bring additional affordable housing for seniors to the northwest side city of Detroit. And so with that, I will yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rand. Anyone else online? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the chamber that would care to comment under public comments today? Hearing and seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Adjournment.
Moved by Commissioner Morecki, supported by Commissioner Clemente. So ordered without objection, we are adjourned.
Hit it harder, Joe.